Good morning. I am calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden and I am the Chair of this committee. And we are joined today by Councilmembers Gordon, Bender, uh, excuse me, Gordon, Conno, Reich, Bender, Andrew Johnson, Yang, Quincy, Worsami has just stepped out, and I know he will be back, Goodman, Frye, and Palmasano. And Council President Johnson is out on city business. And we are a quorum of the committee. We have two items on our agenda for today. The second one is a proposed charter amendment regarding classified service eligibility register. And I am going to move to postpone this item one cycle. I've just sent out a message to my colleagues, but there are very tight timelines and strict requirements on how you time the time when you set the public hearing and when the public hearing can be held. And we need to time this when all 13 council members will be available and have an opportunity to vote on the proposed charter amendment. So we will postpone and take this up again at our regular meeting, May 25th. At that time, we will set the public hearing and then be able to be within the required timeline. So on that motion to postpone one cycle, on approval, please say aye. Aye, opposed, and that item is approved. Now, we will turn to our first and our primary agenda item, and this is presentation of the 2016 STAR awards. These are being presented during Public Service Recognition Week. So this is a perfect time to be able to talk about, I think, a really wonderful program, which was designed by employees, is implemented by employees, and we're about to hear those who have been identified by their peers as being worthy of a special recognition. And this is a culmination of a year of efforts through the STAR awards program. This is the second year in a row that we have had part of the presentation ceremony at the Committee of the Whole. There has already been a ceremony in the rotunda led by the mayor to recognize all of the STAR award recipients and the program itself. And so I'm going to invite, I think it's Mr. Bernardi, is going to give us an overview of the program. And then we will step down and be able to call forward the award recipients and read their certificates and present them to those who are able to join us today. Mr. Bernardi.
Good morning. My name is Chuck Bernardi. I'm with the City of Minneapolis Human Resources Department. Thank you, Councilmember Glidden, members of the Committee of the Whole for having us here this morning. I'd also like to thank the full City Council for their continued support for enterprise employee recognition. Why is recognition important? Employee recognition was identified in multiple employee engagement surveys as something that the city needed to improve on, or was an opportunity for the city to engage in further. Additional support was found in a separate recognition survey that the city did in 2013. Over 1,000 employees participated in that survey in 2013, and more than 90% of city employees wanted their work to be valued and recognized. More than half felt their contributions were not being recognized in a meaningful way. The 2014 Employee Engagement Survey again reinforced employee recognition as a key priority for the city to increase employee engagement across the enterprise. We will be doing the 2016 Employee Engagement Survey this fall, and I'm hoping that this program will indeed have pushed the needle on that particular survey item. What is the STAR awards program? STAR stands for Special Thanks and Recognition. Approved nominees receive a custom-designed recognition coin and certificate. We'll be sharing pictures of those in a minute. The program is designed to provide enterprise recognition options. The program was not designed to replace department employee recognition efforts, which many departments do have very robust existing employee recognition programs. Again, what is the STAR awards program? The award categories are the City Star. The City Star is awarded to employees who make a significant impact to the city, whether it's internally or externally. The Co-Star Award is, again, is a similar award, but it's given to a team of employees who make a significant impact to the city, whether it's internally or externally. The North Star Award is awarded to outstanding leaders. The Shining Star is awarded to employees for their positive influence in the organization, those kinds of employees that everyone likes to work with. And the Service Star, the fifth category, which is awarded to employees who reach significant milestone anniversaries working for the city, and we selected 15, 25, and 30 years of service. The STAR awards program, through an appropriation by the City Council in 2014, we used those resources to develop and design different coins for these different categories. Over on your right, you'll see the Service Star for 15 years of service, 25 years of service, and 30 years of service. On the back of the 15-year, you'll see the Stone Arch Bridge. On the 25-year award, you'll see the City Hall or the Clock Tower. And on the 30-year, you'll see the Father of Water statue. The 25- and 30-year coins are kind of aligned with our current retirement awards, the Father of Water statue and the Clock Tower award. So that's why we kind of did them similarly. Then we have the four other categories at the bottom there, the Co-Star, which was added this year, the City Star, the North Star, and the Shining Star. And on those four coins on the back, we have the official City of Minneapolis seal, which they really do look nice. Who is eligible and involved? All city employees are eligible for STAR awards. Any employee may nominate another city employee for an award. The STAR award committee, made up of representatives from 11 city departments, reviews and approves the nominations for the STAR awards. In terms of timing, each quarter, we review the nominations that came in from the last two or three months. We review the nominations, approve some, send some back for further information, and some are not approved. Annual, in which we're doing today, one individual employee from the City, North Star and Shining Star categories, is designated as a Superstar. Those recipients will be awarded today. They were recognized earlier in the City Hall rotunda and will be recognized here in a few minutes. And we will have, although there's seven employees that reached Superstar status, we only have five of those with us today. In 2015, 2016, two enhancements of note. We added the Co-Star Award category to recognize teams of employees who make a significant impact on the city enterprise. Adding that extra category really increased the number of employees that got awards this last year. And we also worked with our friends in IT to develop an online nomination system, which is much more user-friendly than we had before. During year two of the program, 73 employees were approved for 76 STAR awards, three City Stars, 63 Co-Stars, one North Star, and nine Shining Star. In the corner, there is a department breakdown. Employees from 911, CPED, Finance and Property Services, Health, Human Resources, IT, Police, and Public Works were all award, employees from those departments were all given awards in the past 12 months. Our challenge is to make sure that we try to get winners in every city department. And then recognition results, again. Service Stars are awarded, again, for employees who reach 15, 25, and 30 years of service. There's a breakdown of the number of employees who received those awards in the last year. 322 employees were recognized, 157 at 15, 125 at 25, and 40 at 30. And again, there's a breakdown of the departments where those coins were distributed. In terms of next steps, we will evaluate year two of the program. We will continue and encourage city leaders to promote the program in their respective departments. And nominations for year three of the program will be accepted into March of 2017. And at this time, I'd like to give a shout-out for my colleagues here that are in attendance. We have Brian Tyner from the Minneapolis Fire Department. We have Jennifer Gabbard from Human Resources. Janelle Harris from 911. Nancy Steele from the Convention Center. Randy Mickelson from IT. And Brian Sebo from Public Works. The other folks on the list are not, were not able to join us this morning. And at this time, we are going to transition to the actual Superstar Award presentation. And I believe Councilmember Glidden is going to lead that effort.
So, thank you very much for that presentation, Mr. Bernardi. And thank you so much to all who were able to be here from the STAR award committee, because you've done a lot of work on this. And I want to say thank you to those who weren't able to be here as well. I don't know if my colleagues, I'm not seeing any questions or comments right now, but I just thought I would say, it's actually, I really enjoy being able to read about the STAR award winners in the all-employee email that goes out regularly. It actually gives me a good opportunity just to learn what people are doing all around the city and see that they're being recognized by their peers. So I just wanted to say, that's also, I think, just a really nice way to share this recognition and let some of us around the city be able to understand more about the enterprise. So, thank you to the committee for all they've done throughout the year. All right, I think I'm on. And I wanted to ask if any of the STAR award committee members would be able to join me up here to recognize your colleagues. I think that would be nice. Yes, I would. I did it. Thank you. And come on up on both sides, and we'll maybe figure out then how we have the STAR award winners kind of right in the middle when they come up. Thank you. So, I believe what we're going to do is just call up by category. And the first category I have is the Co-Star Award. And that is the Snow Emergency Team. I'm not sure how many are still able to be here right now, but that includes Julie Hildenbrand, Karen Ojeda, James Sullivan, and Brian Yost. Anyone here? All right, thank you. Thank you so much. And what I will do is I'll go ahead and read your certificate, and then if you would like to say something, you're welcome to. You don't have to, but I know your colleagues would like to hear from you. So, this is a certificate of commendation. And each employee has their own individual certificate, but I'll read it as it is to the Snow Emergency Team. Whereas, the Snow Emergency Team is awarded the Superstar Award for helping our customer wait times, or helping cut our customer wait times in half at the city's impound lot during the snow emergency of February 2nd, 2016, resulting in faster and friendlier service. And whereas, the Snow Emergency Team helped identify gaps and opportunities to improve the customer experience at the impound lot. And whereas, the Snow Emergency Team performs with distinction and deserves special thanks and recognition for their public service. And recognition thereof, this is from the Mayor Hodges and the City Council of the City of Minneapolis hereby present this certificate of commendation to the Snow Emergency Team, together with sincere appreciation and gratitude, and best wishes for future endeavors. Would you like to say a little something?
Just that it's more than the four of us who were nominated, it's impound as a whole. And one of the strongest factors was the team as a whole being willing to be flexible during snow emergencies and going forward.
Actually, I'd like to just say that. It's not just us. Our staff altogether put in, and we do all work as a team to make it successful, so.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Bill Smith, and he is the recipient of the North Star Award for Outstanding Leader. And if you'd like to come up, and if your wife would like to come too, she's welcome, or, no, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Let me read the certificate here. So this is a certificate of commendation presented to William H. Smith. Whereas, William H. Smith is awarded the Superstar Award for his positive and supportive leadership. And whereas, William H. Smith has been a strong, sincere voice for equity and diversity in the construction trades and at the city, mentoring a highly skilled, diverse group of professionals. And whereas, William H. Smith performs with distinction and deserves special thanks and recognition for his public service. And recognition thereof, Mayor Hodges and the City Council of the City of Minneapolis hereby present this certificate of commendation to William H. Smith, together with sincere appreciation and gratitude, and best wishes for future endeavors. Thank you.
Yes. I thank the Council, I thank the committee, and we have been, my team has gone to a great extent to make sure that I got this award. And so, I really thank them for their efforts and all the work that they do in Southwest Minneapolis inspections. It's been a challenge, but it's been good.
Thank you so much. All right. And is Kathy Wagner here? I thought she was. All right. And this is the City Star Award for Significant Impact. All right. So this is a certificate of commendation presented to Kathy Wagner. Whereas, Kathy Wagner is awarded the Superstar Award for saving the City of Minneapolis $230,000 with her ingenuity. And whereas, Kathy Wagner meets her deadlines while juggling numerous concurrent projects, mentors her staff, leads by example, solves problems effectively and creatively, and promotes a win-win environment. And whereas, Kathy Wagner performs with distinction and deserves special thanks and recognition for her public service. And recognition thereof, Mayor Hodges and the City Council of the City of Minneapolis hereby present this certificate of commendation to Kathy Wagner, together with sincere appreciation and gratitude, and best wishes for future endeavors. Thank you very much. Thank you. I work with a lot of wonderful people that work very hard and deserve this award just as much as I do. My team is very supportive and does a lot of work, so it wouldn't even be possible for me to win this without working with some wonderful people. And of course, we all come to work every day, just want to put 100% in and do something good and hope we're committing, or putting something into work that's positive and gonna be a positive influence, and so it's nice to be recognized. Thank you. Thank you. I love it. There you are. Thank you very much. All right. And our last recognition for today is for Sandy Kellogg. This is the Shining Star Award for Positive Influence. She's bringing up another beautiful award. It looks heavy.
I would have been happy with the balloons.
Okay. Note to committee, no. All right. So let me go ahead, and this is a certificate of commendation presented to Sandra Kellogg. Whereas, Sandra Kellogg is awarded the Superstar Award for helping the Minneapolis Police Department reduce crime, partner with the community, and improve employee morale. And whereas, Sandra Kellogg has dedicated her career to serving crime victims and witnesses with dignity and respect. With more than 6,390 phone calls and interactions with victims, witnesses, and suspects in 2015 alone, she also regularly recognizes the work of her peers with letters of appreciation, helping write 250 letters of appreciation for 5th Precinct officers in 2015. And whereas, Sandra Kellogg performs with distinction and deserves special thanks and recognition for her public service. And recognition thereof, Mayor Hodges and the City Council of the City of Minneapolis hereby present this certificate of commendation to Sandra Kellogg, together with sincere appreciation and gratitude, and best wishes for future endeavors. Thank you so much. Can I hold anything for you? Say something?
Actually, this is much better than the balloons. It's gorgeous. I do want to thank my supervisor, Sergeant Giovanni Velez, who nominated me, and of course, this nomination committee, who I don't know personally. So I'm just impressed that you chose me. And just like the last superstar said, it's a team effort for everybody. So we're just one star, and everybody that works for the City of Minneapolis is a star. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, thank you again to the committee for all of their work and for all of the award recipients that were able to be with us today. We really thank you so much, and we appreciate that you were able to share some words with us, too, just giving us a little perspective from your end. And I hope everybody leaves feeling, frankly, really, really great about understanding more of kind of what our employees bring every single day and how they approach their jobs. And anyway, I just thought it was wonderful to hear from you, so thank you so very much. And we have receive and file for the presentation itself, so I'm going to go ahead and move to receive and file the presentation. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, and that item is approved. Thank you very much. So with that, we have committee reports remaining, and our first committee is Community Development and Regulatory Services.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have 11 items we're bringing forward for approval on Friday. Item number one and two are land sales. Item number three is a bond issuance. Item four is conditions for the Viking Bar. Item five are the regular liquor business and gambling license applications. Item six is a rental license dwelling condition. Item seven is an application for the U.S. Department of Labor Pathways to Justice Career Grant. Item eight is our Longcome Housing Tax Credit Procedural Manual and Qualified Allocation Plan. Item nine is a pretty big item. This is pushing the MPHA Board to its full capacity by making a number of appointments, including the reappointment of Clayton Tyler to serve as the Chair, Michael Beckman and Tamira Ali Mohammed for three-year terms, and then also Tawana Black to fill an existing term, as well as Abdullah Asse, filling an existing term and reappointing Tom D'Angelo. So six appointments of nine will bring them to their full capacity. We're really excited about these appointments. I do want to point out that they are extremely representative of the community that MPHA serves. At least four of the six are people of color. One is a woman of color, and two are residents of public housing, one in scattered sight in the 13th ward and the other in a high-rise in Councilmember Worsami's ward. So I think this time, a little time made the process go really well. And many of them were here to speak as well, so it's very positive. Item number 10 is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, RFP. And item number 11 is a contract with Hennepin County to manage industry-specific and geographically targeted job fairs in the city. With that, I'd answer any questions on any of the items.
Thank you. I'm not seeing questions. Next, we have Health, Environment, and Community Engagement with Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing three items forward for consideration at the next council meeting. The first is a passage of an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 59, having to do with after-hours work permits. Second item is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Department of Health for family home visiting services. And the third item is a resolution accepting a donation from the Friends of the Skyway Senior Center in the amount of $90,000 to support the Skyway Senior Center operating expenses. I'll just note that we also heard a report on this issue, and funding for the Skyway Center is, well, the future is in jeopardy because of a lack of funding, so people should be aware of that. And if you want more information, talk to me or the Health Department. That's the report. I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management.
I'm the vice chair of the committee.
The vice chair, Councilmember Gordon, thank you.
The Councilmember Yang had to leave for something. The Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee is bringing three items forward for approval. The first is a mutual aid agreement with the City of Duluth for Minneapolis Mounted Patrol Services during the 2016 Grammys Marathon. The second is a contract with the Minnesota Sports Facilities Authority for bomb detection and 911 dispatch services at the football stadium downtown for up to 25 large-scale events. And the third is also a contract with the Sports Facilities Authority for SWAT officers to also serve large-scale events at the stadium. And those are the three items.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Taxes Committee with Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have, the Taxes Committee has two items bringing forward for approval on Friday. The first item is a passage of a resolution approving the Board of Appeal and Equalization Report. And the second item is directing staff to research ways to ensure Minneapolis residents are aware of and able to apply for state tax relief programs. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Transportation and Public Works with Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee will be forwarding 14 items. The first two were public hearings. One was regarding the I-35W Transit Access Project Municipal Consent Process, and that was approved as amended. The other one is Washington Avenue Reconstruction Street, Kate Scape, from Hennepin Avenue to 5th. And that was for project approval, assessment, and areaway abandonment, and that was approved as submitted. Item, the remaining items were consent, and that's the automatic vehicle management policy as submitted by staff. Item four is the water service line repair assessment reduction for the property listed. Item five is the agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for transfer of soil or stockpile. Item six is a supplemental agreement with the ABC Parking Right Management with the State of Minnesota, and that's for the purposes of staging for fireworks display at Target Field. Item seven is a contract amendment with the Control Incorporated for de-watering plant software changes. Those items are listed. Item eight is the contract amendment for Kale America Incorporated for on-street parking system. Item nine is the contract amendment with Conurbation LLC for the Niklet Mall Project Management for their portion of the project. Item 10 is the 18th Avenue Northeast Reconstruction Project variance request. That's due to some site conditions. Item 11 is the Lake Street Reconstruction from Blaisdell Avenue South to 5th Avenue South, its layout approval and variance request. Item 12 is the Traffic Zone Restrictions and Controls First Quarter Report. That was received and filed. Item 13 was a bid for 26th Avenue Reconstruction Project. And the final item was a discussion item regarding an update on our organics recycling ad campaign and program rollout status. And the staff shared with us a very comprehensive approach to getting the word out. I'll stand for questions, Madam Vice President.
Okay. I don't see any. Next, we have Ways and Means with Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ways and Means has 14 items for consideration and approval on Friday. Item number one is a Item, the remaining items were consent, and that's the Automatic Vehicle Management Policy as submitted by staff. Item four is the Water Service Line Repair Assessment Reduction for the property listed. Item five is the agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for transfer of soil or stockpile. Item six is a supplemental agreement with the ABC Parking Right Management with the State of Minnesota, and that's for the purposes of staging for fireworks display at Target Field. Item seven is a contract amendment with the Control Incorporated for de-watering plant software changes. Those items are listed. Item eight is the contract amendment for Kale America Incorporated for on-street parking system. Item nine is the contract amendment with Conurbation LLC for the Niclet Mall Project Management for their portion of the project. Item 10 is the 18th Avenue Northeast Reconstruction Project Variance Request. That's due to some site conditions. Item 11 is the Lake Street Reconstruction from Blaisdell Avenue South to 5th Avenue South, its layout approval and variance request. Item 12 is the Traffic Zone Restrictions and Controls First Quarter Report. That was received and filed. Item 13 was a bid for 26th Avenue Reconstruction Project. And the final item was a discussion item regarding an update on our organics recycling ad campaign and program rollout status, and the staff shared with us a very comprehensive approach to getting the word out. I'll stand for questions, Madam Vice President.
Okay. I don't see any. Next, we have Ways and Means with Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ways and Means has 14 items for consideration and approval on Friday. Item number one is a severance pay for appointed employees' ordinance. Then there's three legal settlements it will be considering, as well as an agreement with Restorative Justice Community Action for restorative justice services. The Convention Center brings forward three low and responsive bids for various projects at the Convention Center. Item number nine will be a downtown East Commons operations, funding, and gift acceptance. There's a series of five different actions that'll be associated with that. And then there'll be a four Information Technology Department contract amendments and extensions for various software programs and support projects. And the final item is a bid by Wilson Custom Tree for landscape maintenance. Happy to answer any questions on those 14 items.
All right. And finally, we have Zoning and Planning with Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We just have three items from zoning and planning. Item number one is an alley vacation at a church. Item number two is a rezoning for, at 622 15th Street East, to allow a six-story building there. And item number three is updating our zoning code to allow a more updated approach to establishments that provide free food, clothing, and services. Can you answer any questions?
So I'm not seeing any. I'll maybe end this meeting by noting it is Councilmember Bender's birthday today, so we wish her well, and we are expecting some treats, but no, I'm kidding. So anyway, happy birthday, Councilmember Bender. And with that, we have concluded with our business, and we are adjourned. Thank you.